We're ready when you are, Councilor, Mr. President. Everyone's here except for Calvin, so we're good.
Yeah. Well, continue on to move over to the next.
Me and you. You can make the motion.
I said, I'm gonna make a motion.
Yeah. If the majority of you decide that, you don't need to make a motion.
Can I ask everybody to please stand so I could do the pledge of allegiance?
I want to be a citizen of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Present.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Present.
Counselor Lopez?
Yeah.
Counselor Robinson?
Yeah.
Counselor Recupero?
Here.
Counselor Vito?
Present.
Counselor DeJesus? And Counselor Haddelberg?
Here.
Counselor Vega?
Present.
And Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Ten members present, you have a quorum.
Nora Lisa's stuck in traffic, so she's on her way.
We have memoriams and celebratory resolutions. We have a resolution introduced by Council President Robinson and all members of the City Council for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month began as a week-long awareness event by the American Cancer Society in 1985, eventually expanding into a month-long observation. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month educates women about the risk factors for breast cancer, stresses the importance of early detection and regular screening, and supports people diagnosed with breast cancer. And whereas one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetimes, including an estimated 290,000 this year. And whereas the pink ribbon, a universal symbol for breast cancer awareness, began as a joint effort between Self Magazine Editor-in-Chief Alexandra Penny and Estee Lauder's Senior Corporate Vice President Evelyn Lauder, a breast cancer survivor herself. And whereas in 2021, President Biden designated the week of October 17th through October 24th as Men's Breast Cancer Awareness Week to bring awareness to and break down the stigma surrounding breast cancer in men. And whereas, as we observe National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we pause to remember all those who are fighting this disease and their families and friends, along with advocates, researchers, and healthcare providers, as well as those who have lost their lives to breast cancer. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, recognize October 2023 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Chelsea. Acknowledge the importance of raising awareness of breast cancer in our community, as we work to support survivors, those currently battling breast cancer, and those who might detect it in its early stages.
Counselor Judith Garcia moves to accept and file a communication under suspension. See no objection, so moved. You can speak on the matter, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say this is a great resolution. Again, it's an opportunity that we bring this awareness to our community publicly. It's time for, you know, folks to go out and get checked and make sure that you can get those early indications, that those early symptoms. If you feel anything, see anything, it's a part of just to save lives. A lot of us, you know, folks has been affected by some form of cancer, so we try to do our part just to bring a highlight to it, to what the nation does. And we just here at the City Council, every year we bring this forward. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Next auto.
Next, we have a resolution introduced by Council President Robinson and all members of the City Council for Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity for people to recognize the important roles of the public and private sectors, nonprofit organizations, communities, and individuals in helping to prevent and address domestic violence and create a culture that refuses to tolerate abuse. And whereas domestic violence affects millions of people in the United States, causes significant harm to the physical and mental health of survivors and their families, undermines the economic stability and overall well-being, and is sustained on the conscience of our country. And whereas one in four women and one in 10 men have experienced sexual violence, physical violence, or stalking by an intimate partner during their lifetime. And whereas children who grow up in homes where domestic violence occurs are subjected to abuse and neglected at a rate significantly higher than the national average. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, policing court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas founded in 1998, Harbor Cove provides free safety and support services, along with housing and economic opportunities that promote long-term stability for people affected by violence and abuse, specializing in serving survivors who face additional barriers such as language, culture, and economic, by working to create connections to the support survivors need to rebuild their lives through a continuum of options. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby declares October 2023 Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Chelsea. It acknowledges the tireless efforts of Harbor Cove and its representatives in the Chelsea community for advocating and educating on behalf of all victims of domestic abuse.
Counselor Taylor moves to adopt this unanimously under suspension. See no objections. So moved. Any speakers on the matter?
Mr. President.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you. Again, this is another worthy resolution. Every year, this time of the month, we come before you, we bring this unique resolution to bring awareness, to just let folks know that it hits every city, every community. We should not get complacent and lack on it. We do these programs throughout the year, where we have The Taste of Chelsea. A lot of folks think it's just a nice place to go get a lot of food, but that project and that organization, it raised a lot of money for domestic violence and the work we do here in Chelsea, which was mentioned in its resolution. So again, I just feel honored to speak on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next auto.
Next, we have a resolution introduced by Council President Robinson and all members of the City Council for Italian-American Heritage and Culture Month. Whereas Italian-American Heritage and Culture Month, first observed in 1989, is commemorated in October across the United States, acknowledging the contributions made to our nation by Italian immigrants and their descendants. And whereas more than 5 million Italians immigrated to the United States between 1820 and 2000, with over 26 million Americans of Italian descent currently residing in the United States. And whereas for generations, Italian immigrants harnessed the courage to leave so much behind, driven by their faith in the American dream, to build new lives of hope and possibility here in the United States. And whereas the legacy of those intrepid immigrants is found in the millions of American men, women, and children of Italian descent who enrich our nation, with many Italian-Americans operating thriving businesses, serving at all levels of our government, defending our nation by serving in the armed services, teaching our children, and succeeding in a myriad of other occupations. And whereas despite their faith in the American dream, in myriad of contributions to our nation, many Italian immigrants faced racial, social, and religious discrimination, including a mass lynching of 11 Italian-Americans and Italian immigrants in New Orleans, Louisiana, on March 14th, 1891. And whereas through it all, Italian-Americans have persevered with hard work and faith in the American dream. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, hereby declare October 2023 as Italian-American Heritage and Culture Month in the city of Chelsea, honoring the long history and vast contributions of Italian-Americans to our nation.
Counselor Recupero moves to adopt this unanimously with no objection. You have the floor, Counselor.
I am one of those that came from a different land, but I'm a Sicilian Italian, so I'm a little different type of Italian. I'm a Sicilian, but it's still part of Italy. But, and I see, when my mother and father came to this world, it was a hard time for them too. They were prejudiced against, they could go anywhere, they couldn't go anywhere, they couldn't speak the language, they were treated bad, especially by other Italians. They could speak English. They treated their own kind bad because they had to learn how to speak English. But as far as, they raised their children, and from them came my children, which is second-generation Americans and my grandchildren. So as I can see, Italians is, as a race of immigrant, they came from a different world, they had to adjust. And they had a, one of the things that I always disliked about my race as well, that they had to give up their heritage to become Americans, they had to assimilate to become Americans. So most of them changed their names. They shouldn't ever have to change. And no immigrant that comes home anywhere else in this country should ever have to change their names. They should never have to change their identity to please other people. You shouldn't have to. You should keep your heritage and be proud of who you are, regardless of what it is. I seen that with my own kind. And sometimes I'm ashamed of my own kind because they themselves don't want to be who they are. They want to assimilate so much with other races that they forget that they come from a proud and a great race of human beings. They're the only people on earth. They have changed mankind three times. No other race can tell you that. They changed first with the Roman Empire. They gave you everything, they gave you roads. Then the second was with the Renaissance, which gave you the first universities. And the third was with the atomic energy, the batteries. All those came in, great navigators, all came from Italians. But yet, their achievements have never, they never tell you what they achieved. And they're still discriminated until today. Look at it. They didn't even get equal rights until 1966, 65 was when they got the equal rights. They got it from a senator from Rhode Island, his name was Pastore. So just think about it. They didn't even get equal rights until 1965. So what were they? The United States government, when the Italians came to this country, they said to them, "We have a new breed of people that came to this country," because the majority of them were from the South and they were dark-skinned. They said, "We have a new breed of people that come to this country. They're not black, but they're certainly not white." They called "other." You would label them "other." Now, they labeled them as the same. But back when my grandfather came, he told me in the early 1900s what they did to him. And I believe what he said. He used to say, "To be science, no dagos wanted, excuse my term," but they had all these things that said, "None of you's welcome here." So I'm proud in the sense that we, as a people, have achieved and are proud now. The next generation, like I teach my children, be proud of who you are. Don't change who you are for anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brown?
Thank you. Again, I just, my colleague, he's always passionate about this, so I speak on it with him. Again, it's celebrate the rich culture, the tradition, generations, to keep those things that he was just trying to explain to us alive. So it's great. We do it for all, pretty much all different races. So this month here is set aside for, you know, you celebrate the joy, the cult, the culture, the art, the food, the excitement that the generation brought before him. And as my Counselor likes to emphasize on, he wants to make sure the younger generation is coming behind him and knows that's one before him have this understanding. So this is another reason why we celebrate. Congratulations, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Right now, we'll open up for public speaking. Anybody who wants to speak, you take the podium, state your name and address for the record. Also have a sign-in sheet over there if you would like to write your name down and sign, name and address. We'd appreciate it. Council rules shall have four minutes.
Carla Allen, United Steel Workers, Local 9427. My work address is 500 Broadway, Chelsea, Massachusetts. I'd like to continue my remarks from Saturday on behalf-
Can we ask you to remove your hat while you're in the building?
On behalf of my brothers and sisters in 9427, we support the mission of creating a city for all of our residents every day. It has been an honor for each of us to support Tom Ambrosino in this mission, but it has not always been easy. While this council and its predecessors have claimed to support labor, the reality on the ground has not matched that aspiration. As wonderful as Tom was to work for, he viewed collective bargaining agreements as binding on labor and optional on the administration whenever it was inconvenient. The reservoir of goodwill, once full, has been drained, and the new city manager will have to refill it. It has been 50 years since the Second Great Chelsea Fire. Chelsea is still rising from these ashes. We have a huge opportunity, coupled with huge challenges, to build the city that our residents deserve. Your choice in a new city manager will facilitate or frustrate these efforts. Please choose wisely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Anthony Bon Giovanni, 46, Lully Road. A lot of the people come in to the public hearing because they have something to complain. I did. And I want to thank you, the city manager. I want to thank you, the city president, the city councils, for accomplishing what I was asking for. The flags salute. Even though I am not a born American, I'm an adopted American. I have my citizenship, and I am proud to be one of them. So when I see a flag that it is, it's not right. And two, I like the city manager for the trucks. The sign was up within, I would say probably about three days. So for that, I will say thank you. And everybody is not to complain. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kate.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lucia Enriquez. I live in 165 Wennessam Street. The reason that I'm here, I didn't have the opportunity to come to the interview on Saturday, but I thank you for the opportunity that you gave us to see it through the cable. So I view the interviews through the cable, and really I was impressed. I don't think that you're going to be having a hard time choosing the right person for this position. I hear, I was kind of impressed to see the youth that came during the interview. That is important for all of us to see, that they are part of the community, they are the ones that are claiming to be heard. And since we are talking about the youth, and during the interview, there were questions about a youth center. This is something that has been mentioned in the past about the importance to have a youth center. That's one of the concerns that the youth from our community are having because they don't have, after they get out from school, I wish that the same way that the younger generation goes to the Boys' Hunger Club, it will be an opportunity also for the youth to have a place to go, instead of just hanging around in the community and sometimes getting into the wrong places. So my, my comment here, my sentences about the decision that you're going to be make, choosing the city manager, I'm from Honduras, and I have been here in this, in this city since I came from Honduras in 1979, and I have been part of this community. I had grown within the community, within the Chelsea. I think, I seem myself part of this community. And since I am part of this community, and I represent many of our community, I think that you're going to be, you have like a responsibility in your hands to choose the person that is going to be representing not only the youth, the community that we really, we are proud to be here, but somebody that relate. I heard the interviews, and everybody did like a really great, in terms of having great communications with you, what are their plans when they become city managers, and to really go out there to meet the community. So we already have somebody that knows the community, and somebody that has been in the community for so long, that knows what are the issues and the concerns that we have in, excuse me, here in Chelsea. So I, I'm suggesting that you, you won't have a really hard time. If you are thinking about the residents of Chelsea, and you want to make a difference in the community, and you want to really make the community proud of who you are, that one of those youth can be there tomorrow. So I just commend that you make the right decision. For the person that are really going to make a difference, having like a really, I hear about communications, transparency, community involvement, that's what we need. Somebody that knows what's going on in the community, that I can relate with the issues and the concerns that are happening out there. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, folks. My name is Armando Rivera, 7 Prescott Avenue, Chelsea. And I want to comment as well on the selection of a city manager this evening. I think, from what I understand, from what I saw, from what I've seen of resumes of these candidates, the fact of the matter is, I think it's pretty professionally irresponsible, given that the majority of the population of this city is Latino and is presumably Spanish-speaking. I think it's a non-starter that any city manager in this day and age should not be bilingual, particularly in Spanish. I think it's a pretty morally irresponsible thing. Because I share Counsel Recupero's sentiment about heritage and cultural pride, and the tendency of this country to forcibly assimilate by erasing your culture. But the best thing that this City Council can do is to lean and lead, the city manager reflect for our youth, for our population, the same principles and ideals, and the same cultural heritage as the majority of this time. And that may change. It will likely change. Let's hope that it does, and it continues to diversify. But it matters. And if the city manager can't even speak or understand the language that many of our residents are monolingual in, that's not, I can't do my job. I work in Chelsea in two jobs, and both of them require me to be bilingual. I'm not perfect. I have a little bit of gringo Spanish, but like, I understand what my kids tell me, what the fellow artists that I work with talk to me about. I can't do my job if I'm not bilingual, because I work in this city. And so that's all I'll say about that. But one more thing that I'll say, as an artist working in Chelsea, making art in Chelsea, trying to advance the arts in Chelsea, the fact that none of these candidates voiced that the arts was an all a priority in this city's development doesn't entice me or motivate me to continue dedicating my time and my energy to be an artist in this community. So I urge the City Council to please consider that as well in holding whoever you choose as city counselor, a city manager accountable to the arts, because arts is culture. We want to have a vibrant downtown corridor, you need more events, all of the types of events. We need to make it easy for us. And if that's not a priority for our city manager, it's never going to happen. And thank you for your time. I really appreciate everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Lisa Santigate, 221 Chertle Street. And I'm actually here with some sad news. Many of you may know Catherine Moss, who served on the Board of Health. She also worked as a tireless advocate for environmental justice with both La Colaborativa and Green Roots. And I'm sorry to say that she passed away last Wednesday. She left Chelsea two years ago, suffering from dementia, and passed away with her family close by in Utah last week. She, she was an incredible person. She fought hard. Some of, I think there's an ordinance for air quality here and no idling. She did a lot, and I was very sorry to hear that she had passed. So I just wanted to let the community know.
Thank you. Any other speakers for public speaking?
Good evening. My name is Manuel Tasha. I live at 188 Broadway. First of all, I want to start by thanking all the city councillors that have taken on the process of choosing the next person who's going to be pretty much leading the city of Chelsea. Some of you might know my story, but for the ones that you don't, that don't, I moved to Chelsea from El Salvador. I came here fleeing gang members that were ravaging cities and taking the lives of some of my classmates. So, you know, I left my country pretty fearful of the entire situation, and I came in, in Chelsea, seeking for a place that would welcome me and help me achieve some of the dreams that I've had. So, you know, 10 years have passed ever since I arrived, and, you know, I don't think I have the ability to thank everybody that I've met in Chelsea, but I would like to do that. If this is a forum to do that, then I would do it. But at the same time, I also want to say that we are at a moment where a lot of things are changing in Chelsea, and there is finally that potential that, you know, there's going to be so much diversity, and we are now getting that to become a reality. And so, you know, through that, I would say let that also lead the decision you make tonight. Let it lead how you choose the next few years of Chelsea, how they're going to be handled, how the city's going to look, what languages are going to be spoken, the diversity we're going to see out in the streets. So, you know, I know my voice sounds somber, but I'm not somber. I'm pretty hopeful, and I'm very happy. And I'm very confident as well that the council will be able to make the right decision for Chelsea. And whoever ends up being the city manager, I know they will do a good job, because they will be chosen by the people and by the elected officials, who were also chosen by the people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers at this time? If there's no other speakers, we'll close our portion of the meeting.
Hello, everyone. Jaime Hernandez, 13A Garfield Avenue in Chelsea. I've never been here before or done this, so excuse if I'm a little nervous. But speaking, piggybacking on what Armando said about how important the arts should be for all people, not just youth, I'm a lifelong Chelsea resident, born and raised, and I still live here today. And right now, I'm a professional artist, and I've been given the opportunity because of, I got my first start acting professionally at the Appollinari Theater. Now, that facility has given me a resource. But when I think about how other cities have so much more resources, not just in acting and theater, and music, and physical art, I don't want to think about all the great artists that could have been from Chelsea that just didn't have the opportunity. And so because of that, their potential has never grown, and they couldn't fulfill and continue their path with their journey. So I urge the city councils who, with the arts, make sure that it is a proponent that we think of with the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Vargas. Address is 176 Chestnut Street. It's been a while since I actually spoke in this podium and I feel like I've been a product of Chelsea, product like organizations like La Cola Bativa, who made me who I am today. And I feel like I've been a product that been sent off into the real world. But that doesn't mean that I wouldn't wanna come back and advocate for other youth like me who started off at just seventeen years old, not knowing what they want to do in life and kind of just took life as a grain of salt. And I feel like I'm one of the very few youth during that time that did have opportunities to start working at a young age. But the whole point, what I'm trying to say is that whoever you guys do choose as city manager, I hope that they can consider more youth programs so more youth like me can become where I am now, or even so, just come back to the city of Chelsea and stand in the same seats that you guys are today. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can everyone see me? I'm so short. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelly Garcia. The address is 135 Washington Ave. I'm here to say two quick things to the youth that were here Saturday, that are here every single meeting, thank you. Thank you for pushing all of us and the school committee members that sit in those seats to do better, to think about how are we giving back to this community? How are we creating policies that will improve our city and give back to our community? So to the youth, once again, as the inner educator in me and the chairwoman of the Chelsea School Committee, I thank you for always holding me accountable as your leader and the leaders in front of you. Now to the city council, what a big decision, and I wish you all the best of luck and I hope and pray that the leader that you choose will value the city, that will make decisions based on what is best for every single one, that you think about their marginalized communities and populations, even if there's, you know, one constituent that has an issue. I hope that you prioritize, I hope that that individual prioritizes that one complaint. I wish you the best of luck and we'll be here to support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers at this time? I'll ask again, any other speakers at this time? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Chair recognizes Council Haddelberg.
If there are no objections, we have the selection of the city manager under unfinished business continued from last meeting. I would move that we take it out of order at this time and take up the decision on the next city manager by a voice vote at this time and delegate to the council president the negotiation of a contract if we're able to select the next city manager.
Chair recognizes Council Brown.
I object to Council Haddelberg's motion. Act that we move it to our next meeting.
No, that objects to taking it out of order, so we'll wait until it comes up under unfinished business.
You can't.
You can object.
We can take a vote.
You can object.
Let's take a vote.
Yes.
So we, it will come up in the meeting?
Oh, yes.
Can we just have some clarity? Cause I don't get it and I'm sure they don't.
He, he, council objected to a coming, taking it out of order. It's still on the agenda, back in unfinished business. So come up on, on the unfinished business.
I don't see where it was unfinished business.
It shouldn't have been on it.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not, that's why I'm asking.
I'll, I'll, I'll have the clerk clarify the.
The selection of the city manager was included on the agenda for your special meeting. Council Haddelberg made the motion to postpone it to the next scheduled meeting, which was tonight. It didn't give an opportunity for it to be placed on the agenda formally, but because it was postponed at the last meeting, it's brought to the meeting tonight, either, in which case the council is free to vote on it, be free to make a motion to postpone it again, it's your choice, but it's on the agenda for this evening when it comes up. Under unfinished business, correct?
Sounds great. Few more minutes.
Next, order of business.
Approval of the minutes for the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the city council.
Move to accept and file a communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Council de Molly, thank you.
Next, we have approval of the minutes for the September twentieth, twenty twenty-three special meeting of the city council.
Move to accept and file a communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, so moved.
Next, we have communications on the city manager. We have a copy of a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe regarding a request for conflict of interest law exemption. Dear councillors, I am writing to request council approval for several conflict of interest law exemptions. Chelsea Public Schools would like to hire a current DPW employee, Mr. Alejandro Arroyo, as a part-time employee for the girls' head softball coach for middle schools. Additionally, I am respectfully requesting that Ms. Amy Velez get compensated for her work as a part-time summer paraprofessional this past summer.
Mr. President, I ask that we waive the rest of the reading. There'll be something coming up under new business if there are no objections, of course.
There will be something coming up on the new business. Seeing no objections, so moved.
Next, we have a communication received from acting city manager Kate Fox-Lent regarding commuter rail quiet zone restoration update. Dear councillors, in response to the order of the city council on September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, this update on the restoration of the commuter rail quiet zone is provided. A quiet zone is established through an agreement between a municipality and the Federal Railroad Administration. However, in Chelsea, most of the site and signal improvements required to establish a quiet zone.
Accept the communication.
Council Haddelberg moves accept and file a communication under suspension. Seeing no objections, so moved.
Next, we have a copy of a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe regarding a new zoning amendment. Dear councillors, I am writing to request that the city council consider additional changes to the city's zoning ordinance. This change has been prompted by a recent proposal submitted to the city. The change seeks to revise the definition of indoor commercial recreation to include more types of recreational uses. The council approved a minor change to this definition in twenty seventeen to include an archery tag and mystery game recreation facility. The city has received a request from a property owner in the shopping centers district to accommodate.
Mr. President, I ask that we waive the rest of the reading under suspension if there are no objections. There'll be something coming up under new business.
Actually, this will be moved to the planning board and there'll be a request for a public hearing. Seeing no objections, we so moved.
Next, we have a copy of a communication received from acting city manager Kate Fox-Lent regarding Chelsea Youth Commission appointments. Dear councillors, pursuant to section four dash two of the charter of the city of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend for appointment to the Chelsea Youth Commission three new applicants, Ms. Yuri Lee, Mr. Jose Castellone, and Mr. Daniel Prudencio for the recently vacated one-year terms expiring on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. All appointees are high school students and have experience with Chelsea-based community outreach programs. I am also requesting a reappointment of four current members, including Mr. Brendan Oso, Ms. Tine Haleo, Ms. Daniela Maldonado, and Ms. Ariana Perdomo, all for new one-year terms expiring October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four as well. All reappointees have expressed interest in continuing their involvement with the Chelsea Youth Commission. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Copies of all the new applicants' resumes are attached.
Move to a second reading.
Seeing no objection, so moved.
Next, we have a copy of a communication received from acting city manager Kate Fox-Lent regarding streetlight repair update. Dear councillors, I am writing to you today in response to the order of the city council on September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, to look into hiring a new company to perform all streetlight repairs in the city of Chelsea. The city of Chelsea has more than two thousand streetlights that are of several different styles and vintages. Although we have recently replaced many of the fixtures with LEDs, there are many other causes of failure, including issues with the control mechanism, the above-ground wiring and below-ground wiring. Our contractor is in Chelsea nearly every week to respond to requests, some of which are straightforward and some of which take more than one trip to diagnose and repair. I understand that members of the council and public are concerned about streetlight outages and the contractor's response time in repairing them. However, DPW is also involved as we need to follow up on the reports from the public to gather more information before contacting the contractor. In my role as Commissioner of Public Works, I see opportunities to improve our internal processes for how we document outages and communicate them to the contractor. I believe that focusing on internal improvements can alleviate much of the concern and I can assure you I will oversee this effort directly. I recommend that we pursue this process improvement first before looking into hiring a different contractor.
Council Recupero moves. Council Recupero moves. Council Recupero moves to accept and file a communication. You have, you have the floor, councillor.
Today, I seen them fix some lights on Broadway. So that means we must have lit some type of fire on the, the management because they, they seem to be going out there to fixing these lights. That's what they should be doing, they should be fixing the lights because lights are very important. So I guess to the commissioner, thank you for lighting a little fire under this, whoever it is that does it, but today they were fixing it. So I hope they continue with that and that will keep fixing the lights and there'll be no more issues. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Next, order.
Next, we have communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from Chelsea resident Jeff Palencia regarding traffic issues on Washington Avenue.
Motion to accept and file a communication under suspension.
Seeing no objections, so moved.
Next, we have a copy of a communication received from city solicitor Cheryl Watson-Fisher regarding the repeal of section thirty-four dash one fifty-eight C two of the zoning ordinance. Dear councillors, the city zoning ordinance is section thirty-four dash one fifty-eight C dash two currently prohibits marijuana retailers from operating between the hours of nine PM and nine AM. The regulation of licensed establishments in Chelsea tends to fall to the licensing commission and not the city's land use multi-member boards. We are seeking a repeal of the section so that the licensing commission may issue licenses according to the public's needs and wishes. The current establishments will all have hours as a condition of their special permits. So the process going forward for them is to seek an amendment to the hours from the zoning board of appeals and then approval from licensing. Encloses an order for your review. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me.
Council Brown moves accept and file a communication. Needs to be moved to the planning board and a date will be set for a public hearing.
Next, we have a communication received from Chelsea resident Bruce Black regarding city manager selection.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to waive the reading and just say that it's a glowing recommendation from a resident for candidate for Doma test. Under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, so moved.
We have unfinished business. We have the order previously introduced by Council Haddelberg regarding the city manager finalist.
At this time, I would motion that we adopt the next city manager or hire the next city manager by voice vote and delegate to the city council president the negotiation of a contract with the new city manager if we are able to come to agreement.
Object to that motion?
Can't object to it. It's by roll call.
You can't, can't object. It's okay.
You could move to amend it if you wanted to. We could vote on your amendment.
Make an amendment that we have it at our next meeting if you'd like amended to that, which is October sixteenth.
So then we would vote on the amendment. We vote on the amendment to not vote on the city manager today.
One at a time, one at a time, please. Clerk will clarify the vote.
The, the motion on the floor from Council Brown is to delay the vote on the city manager, I believe, to our next scheduled meeting on the sixteenth. Is that if I'm correct? So on the roll call vote, a yes vote would be to delay today's city manager vote to the meeting on the sixteenth. A no vote will be to reject the order, the motion.
Chair recognizes Council Taylor. On the amendment?
On the amendment. So I think this issue is, is fairly straightforward. I think that this is a big decision that we're making to hire the next city manager and I'm not sure how everybody feels on this council. I don't see any harm in delay, excuse me, delaying the vote till the next meeting. However, it's not very fruitful if everybody has their minds made up and it's not gonna do any good if everybody's set on it. So I would say let's vote on the amendment. But I do, I do hope that all the councillors have done their due diligence and have thought very carefully about this because this is one of the most important things that this council will do. So, you know, we haven't really had an opportunity to deliberate publicly, of course. So I think that some of this stuff is actually fruitful because some of us may have objections to certain candidates or, or, or are in favor of certain candidates that some of the councillors might not have thought of and, you know, this is how we come to consensus, is by talking to each other. So that being said, if everybody has their mind made up, there's really no need to do that, but I'll leave it to the will of the council. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Council Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see, I too would not see an issue with delaying the vote, except that we've done our due diligence. We had a search committee that we've been waiting for months to finally deliver the candidates. We had a very lengthy Saturday that I really, with very little public announcement and we expected people to sit here who did for eight hours while we sat here and we asked questions. And at the very least, as my previous councillor said, I don't know that people have their made up, made, mind made up or not. But Mary from the search committee said, when you know, you know, and cream rises, right? That's, that's what she said in the meeting. I didn't know what that meant. I didn't have to look up the analogy, but she said it and I, I, I feel confident in being able to make this decision. But again, no one person controls this body and only voting on this would, would tell, would tell. But I feel one hundred percent ready to finally make a decision on the city manager process. Thank you.
Chair recognizes.
Thank you, President. So I agree with my colleagues, especially because I don't think, and, and, and I want to share that I have taken the time to meet with department heads. I understand that the employees of the city are looking forward and it's been a long process and this is something that needs to be done in order for the work in these departments to continue. I fully acknowledge that. I also understand that we had a Saturday meeting, there were constituents who came up and spoke. I am grateful for the time that they spent here. I had constituents here from the beginning of the meeting all the way to the end, but there are people who have not been able to voice their opinion for whatever reason. I would love for us to give this opportunity for those who have not been able to. And if they don't, or there, there's no more comment, that's fine, but then we are not the body that did not allow that, right? I think that I am, I would be remiss if I, there, there's nothing to lose. If we are able to extend it just until the next meeting, it will give that opportunity. This is a very important vote. I am really thankful for the time that the, the committee took and for the applicants and for the people, the, the candidates that we have up, up in front of us. We have an opportunity to do something amazing for this city. But if it's just two weeks and there are people out there that want to voice their opinions, the opinion that we got today from the artists in our community, like who knows if there are business owners, homeowners, renters, I want to know what else is out there to, to be said. And so if we can move this forward just two weeks, I, I would, I think it would be very important and crucial for the community.
Thank you, Council. Council Lopez.
We were here, we listened to all the candidates, the Collins Center already did the job looking for the most qualified people. And we had some committees, I don't know why they hold up, wait till the next two weeks. Some of us already have our minds made up already and I don't think why, why we have to wait. There was a way for people to come and speak up, send emails and whatever, and they didn't do it. I think we're all set to do it.
Thank you, Council. Council Garcia, Judith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo the sentiments of the colleagues who are ready today to make this important decision. It has been months. Tom and Brucino reside on January thirteenth. We did our due diligence to find a committee. Mr. President actually assigned and appointed council members to help in the search process of a steering committee composed of residents and they did a. of a steering committee composed of residents, and they did a remarkable job. And I think that we cannot oversee the efforts of these residents who have been longstanding leaders of this community. They brought before us, they screened many candidates, brought before us the four strongest ones, and today, as a council, we have a responsibility. It's a big responsibility. Individually, we could have done that work of reaching out to our constituents, listening. I should also point out that we had surveys go out, we received emails, you have emails in front of you, and let's make a decision. Government is known for delaying and delaying and pushing and kicking the can and kicking the can. Let's do our jobs today, and let's vote. Thank you.
Counsel Recupero.
I agree with my fellow counselor, what she says. We had all the time we needed. Counselors weren't even, we didn't ask for any special things, we just went along with the committee and whatever they fall, to say we followed, we followed, and we listened to everything and we brought the candidates forth. So now, waiting any longer, what is the difference? You're gonna have to make a decision, and I think tonight is the time to make the decision. The decision we, most of us already can understand who we are gonna choose. So we choose, that's it, what is the point? It's needless to say, let's postpone it. Postpone it for what? It ain't gonna make a difference. So do the vote and get it over with, and let the city go on with the business of having a city manager that can run our city and go on. That's all we have to do, is just vote, and that's it.
Counsel Brown.
Again, we will vote, but we won't vote hopefully tonight. I, again, two weeks, two weeks, we were up here huffing and puffing about we had all this time, we have not had all this time. We had one solid meeting on a Saturday morning, on a rainy Saturday morning, where folks came up to listen, it was a grueling meeting. We had the Collins Center do a lot of background work, we came in here with questions. Matter of fact, we had to get questions clear prior to the meeting, just because we were doing our own internet searching and finding out candidates with morally, without morals and values regarding commitments and accountability. We have an opportunity to go and understand that we may need to hear more about the commitment that these candidates wanna really extend to the city of Chelsea. Maybe you got a candidate that would say, you know what, I'll do whatever you want me to do, but believe it or not, neither one of the candidates that we interviewed on Saturday spoke about arts, not one. You know, you laugh, you make faces today, but you had concerned citizens and youth come up and saying if it wasn't for the arts, they wouldn't be here speaking today because that wasn't an outlet for them to continue their lives. There's other, there's other things that we need to talk. If you ask for a show of hands, I'm sure it'd be maybe two or three city councilors to say, I spoke to a department head. We don't have time for that. I had time for it, but I still understand that other folks are saying, why are you guys rushing it? You got this committee, you got the applicants, you brought them before us, why don't you take some time and talk amongst yourself and also maybe talk to a few of the, now, since we got the elite four, to the department heads and see how this team is gonna be formed and how they perceived. A lot of folks that wanna come up here and public and say, hey, this is what I think about the candidates, and I wanna do this, and I want them to do this, and I wanna, that's our decision. We don't have to ask them to back a candidate, we just wanna hear what their opinion is about the process and what did we miss in the opportunity to interview the candidates. This city council decision will last a minimum of five years. Three of seven councilors said we got tired of it already. Qualification, accountability, commitment to the city of Chelsea, understanding where Chelsea is and what Chelsea is. We are, we should not be in any hurry to make this decision unless you really feel like that you got that one candidate, without a question of a doubt, that will get elected here tonight and move forward and be the next city manager. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other, Counsel Hattlerberg?
So I respect the need to make appropriate deliberations and think, I just feel that I've had the opportunity to do so, and given that I feel I've had the opportunity to do so, I'm interested in voting. So my own personal inclination, I'll be voting no on the amendment, and am hoping to vote for the next city manager, so looking forward to that.
Any other speakers on the motion?
Mr. President, can the clerk clarify the vote one more time?
Sure, you can.
The vote will be on Counsel Brown's motion to delay the vote on the city manager until next council meeting on October sixteenth. A yes vote will be in favor of the amendment and delay the vote for city manager, a no vote will be to reject the amendment, and go from there.
Counsel Taylor, do you have a question? Or Melinda has a question?
I hear what all my peers are saying, and I just want, I would be remiss if I don't mention how important today's vote is, and I don't think, I think if we delay the vote, it sets, it sets a precedent as if we don't, not like, if we don't trust the process that we, that we are in, you know? That's one. Secondly, I think that, you know, we, I don't want, I feel that if we, if we delay the vote, then we are also stating that some, something negative or a negative connotation in terms of our selection committee, and we're taking their power away, and I think that's wrong. I feel that, you know, if we feel that we, and if we feel that we didn't do enough to get community engagement, then that's on us, that is on us, but that does not mean that the selection committee that we chose to do their work, that they did not do their work, and that they did not select a strong, you know, strong, strong four candidates out of the thirty or so candidates that were, that applied for the position. Having that said, I am also gonna vote no on this motion, 'cause I am prepared to make my vote.
Counsel Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, look, I just wanna say one thing, and it's this. You know, I think that as we up here make decisions for the city of Chelsea, there needs to be responsible decision-making based on responsible deliberations that happen and debate, public debate. We need to have a robust public discourse in this city about a whole array of issues that isn't quite happening at the moment. So with all due respect to everybody, I know they have their opinions and, you know, some people are ready to vote tonight, others aren't, and that's fine. I see no reason to wait if the majority of the people want to vote tonight, and that it's not, waiting is not gonna change their minds. But I would please suggest to the public out there who's watching, insist upon a robust public discourse, where you don't just get a narrative that gets funneled through and everybody's yay, Chelsea. Decisions, good decisions are debated, there's an upside and a downside to almost everything in life. So please, let's, let's, let's be responsible about how we make decisions in this city. I'm all for, I'm all for talking to my fellow councilors and to the public and to other stakeholders to try to get everybody's voice heard, but let's, let's, let's do it in a responsible way. Thank you.
Are we all speaking twice before we're ready to vote?
I'll let you speak as long as you want.
Just trying to figure out what's going on here.
Tenere Garcia.
Hi, good evening. This, this by far has been the toughest decision I think that we are gonna make this year, and we need a responsible city manager, someone that represents our city, and I feel, one, I think the public is ready for us to vote, that's just my opinion, but I, I understand my fellow colleagues, but we are eleven, we are public figures, our information is online, posted everywhere, not only that, the city, the city's phone number is everywhere. If you really, really had an interest in our city managers' process, you would have emailed, you would have called, and I, I really hope, I appreciate every single one of the youth that spoke, I appreciate every single one of the residents that spoke, but I, I feel like we are wasting time. Chelsea needs a city manager, and I'm ready to vote today.
If I may, I think this body a week ago was saying that we needed more input into the matter. I mean, I'm ready to vote whenever that vote should take place.
Good.
But I think this body did ask those six of who were interested in having more input. I just want the people to know that.
Let's vote.
What?
Can we vote? Can we vote? Can we, can we vote?
Did a roll call?
Yes, we're gonna have a roll call. Call the roll call.
Can you, can you explain that again, because we were, we were waiting for the amendment that he put in.
Yes, that's what we're gonna vote on.
That's what we're gonna vote on.
Again, the clarification, the vote is on Counsel Brown's motion to delay the vote for the city manager until the next council meeting on October sixteenth. A yes vote is in favor of the amendment to delay the vote, a no vote will be to reject the amendment, and then go from there.
Mm-hmm.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Julie Garcia.
No.
Counsel Tenere Garcia.
No.
Counsel Lopez.
No.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero.
No.
Counsel Vito.
No.
Counsel DeJesus.
Yes.
Counsel Hattlerberg.
No.
Counsel Vega.
No.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Four in favor, seven opposed, the motion is rejected.
On the original, on the original motion.
Counsel Hattlerberg made a motion to bring the names of the city manager candidates forward for a vote. It'll be by name.
Can I speak on it?
Chair recognizes Counsel Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. President. So much to say. Okay. I had a lot of concerns with the Collins Center from the beginning, on which I voiced very early on. They weren't clear about dates, Counsel Garcia and I were the only ones to be in an email chain advocating for more transparency. However, I had faith in the search committee that we chose, and I have faith in our ability to be able to discern what we know we want for the city. We did want more public speaking because there was a push to not have any, which is why we all collectively decided to not vote on Saturday, but vote today and have that portion of public speaking open from Saturday to Monday. I fear that what we're doing here and trying to stop the vote feels political driven, and I don't like it, because enough is enough with the Eagles and the community that pays for it in the end. The other thing I wanna say is, with all full respect to my prior counselor, who has become actually one of my allies on this council, but the assumption that I didn't do my due diligence or that the responsible thing is to wait, I take a little offense to that. I have met with every single department head, even former chief KIs, fire chief, ISD, planning, recreation, and I've given everybody the time. I even met with staff, there was only three department heads I couldn't find, they have shifty schedules, but that's the city manager's problem to deal with in the future. I met with, I've met with community leaders, I asked people, I solicited responses, I ended fights I've had with people for years because, yes, you, because it was time for us to unite and do what's best for this community. I have been on this council for going on eight years in December, and I have, sometimes I voted alone, but I have always centered my community first. When I was listening to the candidates, what I was listening for is a unique perspective, a lived experience, someone that uses collaborative language like we, us, team building and less eyes. I wanted people to tell me, who are you when you take off your suit at the end of the day? And so many people's identity is so rooted in, in their professional aspect, I was looking for the, for human, I was looking for someone that can talk to me about how they can connect with the unique needs in this community. I've not done the greatest job as a city counselor, but I've done my best, and I've done it with integrity, and I do feel that I've done my due diligence in talking to residents, department heads, elected officials, staff members, and I took that all into account. Today, I am ready to vote for someone who I believe embodies all of that, someone that came here and got choked up when they talk about coming back home, someone who speaks the language of the majority of the residents of this community, but putting identity to the side, someone that knows how to rally around the community and collaborate with people despite what their differences are, somebody that even in a suit picks up a shovel and throws away trash. I am ready to vote for the person that I have seen time and time and again come in here and advocate for the needs of this community. I'm not putting politics into this, I'm putting my community first, and I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
Counsel DeJesus.
So I spoke earlier about wanting more time. I spoke earlier about also speaking with department heads. I roll up my sleeve and I have conversations face to face, that's my, that's my go-to. I also do that with my constituents. I received feedback that there was not a lot of community input received, there were people who spoke here from leaders in our community for years that shamed us for not doing the outreach that's needed, people who I have learned the ropes for, that in order to do real community engagement, you have to put the effort in meeting those who are most vulnerable and making sure they have a voice in this space, that this is also their home. I will be taking a vote today because my comments earlier were not that I was not already seeing someone who had the capacity to be our next city manager, and I know that this next person, who will potentially be the city manager in Chelsea, will also have the same skills and the same mindset to reach those most vulnerable in our community, to reach those who may not respond to an email, and are able to relate to some of the needs and some of the challenges that come with being a minority in Chelsea. And so I am also ready to vote today, although that my colleagues don't agree in the extension, I respect that. It is not to offend of any of my colleagues, it is a response that I have to my constituents who asked for me to extend it, and that is it.
Thank you. Counsel Taylor.
So I just wanna briefly respond to, to my colleague who I believe misunderstood what I was saying. I wasn't calling into question any councilors that didn't do their due diligence, it was my intention to have some sort of a robust debate amongst ourselves, to which we have only really been able to talk to each other one-on-one. Unfortunately, I didn't get the opportunity to talk to everybody, but I, I tried to reach out to everybody. So that, that's, 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 that's my, my point. My point about, in general, in Chelsea.
Counsel, to the chair.
Sorry?
To the chair.
In, my, my remarks were in general about how we make decisions in Chelsea, and I think they need to be done transparently, publicly, with debate, and not, you know, just a kind of a bum rush about what's needed. I think people need to be heard and issues need to be debated, so that's my only point. I, I, I too will vote tonight if that's, if that's the will of the council, and I appreciate it, but I wanted to make clear my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Did I understand, Counsel Hattlerberg, that you submitted all four names?
Yes, sure. So my intention was, at the voice vote, you would state the name of the candidate you intend to support for city manager. So my intention was, at the voice vote, you would state the name of the candidate you intend to support for city manager.
Well, we're going to have any discussion?
Yeah, I just, I can't follow what he's stating. But in the past, when we had a vote on a city manager.
All right, I apologize. I will retract my motion. I will move that we select Fidel Maltese by roll call vote for city manager of the city of Chelsea. Okay? That's my motion.
Well, first of all, I think that's out of order. I think the chair, I think the chair has to address how the vote will go forward.
If I may, if I may clarify the vote. We're going to submit, all four candidates' names are up. So if you want to speak on a candidate, you have the time to speak on that candidate, why you're supporting that candidate. Well, don't you want to know why you're voting for that candidate? I think the people in the room would like to know why you're supporting that candidate. I think the people in the audience would like to know why you're supporting that candidate. Any other?
The motion is to select the city manager and vote on it.
By name, so whichever candidate, so you're...
My proposal is to do it by voice vote. There seemed to be some confusion. I'd be glad to replace it with a clearer vote, whatever people would like to do.
So I'm a bit perplexed as to where we are. Mr. Clerk, if you can please clarify.
The original motion that Councilor Haddelberg made is what we've done in the past during the last city manager process, where all the names who were presented to the council as finalists are brought before the council. So that whichever council makes their vote, you have the option to vote for any of the four. The other option was for each councillor to pick one candidate to bring before. But Councilor Haddelberg's motion is that they're all brought collectively, so the council has a choice to make any of the four finalists that were presented before the council. It will be by name. And seven votes are required for hiring of the city manager.
Does anybody want to speak on the candidate? Relax. Let's take a two-minute break here. Let's take a two-minute break so we can regroup.
Can somebody talk to Councilor?
You got the vote? Just going to wait for the clerk to get back. Clerk will read the four candidates.
As per Councilor Haddelberg's motion, the four candidates whose names are being presented before the city council for the vacant city manager position are as follows. Michael McGovern, Fidel Maltese, Cheryl Watson Fisher, and James Duggan.
Anybody want to speak on the matter? When they nominate the person who they're interested in nominating. Councilor Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be supporting candidate Fidel Maltese. I do want to say that I really did appreciate all the four candidates and everything that came out. I thought that city solicitor Cheryl Watson Fisher had some great ideas. I thought that Mike McGovern kind of gave me like a Tom Ambrosino vibe, kind of a laid-back guy. And James Duggan, I just want to go have a beer with him. But all in all, I'm going to be voting. And you know, it's funny because I know for a lot of people in the community, it's kind of been like, we don't need an external candidate. It should be between the two Chelsea folks because we have so much talent within. I think that one of the pluses with going with Fidel is that we get to keep Fidel, and we have to get Fidel back, and we get to keep Cheryl. So I don't, you know, I don't want to get, I just want to thank the search committee. I want to thank the Collins Center, even though I will be writing some Yelp reviews. I want to thank all the residents that reached out, all the department heads that took the time to speak with me, the city staff, the youth that came and spoke, and everybody here, especially our staff, Jessica and Cliff, for all the work that they did behind the scenes to ensure that we had all the tools we needed to be able to show up for our community. So thank you, everybody, for being a part of this. I'm really looking forward to a Maltese administration and representation at the top that looks like the people on the bottom. Thank you.
Any other? Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be supporting Mr. Duggan James. He came in with a very impressive resume, a town manager, a person with a wealth of experience with budgets, with department heads, with collective bargaining. He's worked with the state in a secretary position for the last three and a half years under the Baker administration. Very sound, very down-to-earth. One of the questions that was asked of him during the interview process, who are you when you take your shirt off, when you go home and you take your shirt off and your tie off? He said, I'm just like you. I'm a down-to-earth person. I can do what you do. I'm no different than you are.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry. He showed a lot of respect. He showed, talked about his work and collaboration, the team building, how it was about the city council. He understood the government that we have here, council, city manager relationship. He understood his role. So when there was a question asked about priorities, his first answer was, they will be your priorities. I would work to meet those priorities and enhance and engage in those priorities. Very humble. He stated that he, and he has shown through his resume, extensive resume, his character, his work and his commitment to the cities and the towns that he's been involved with, and also, as I stated earlier, the state. So I think, you know, the second big question, and we all had these questions, that he stated, there was one question said, well, what is Chelsea's strengths and weaknesses? And he talked about affordable housing. He said, you know, a lot of good things are going on here, but what's under the radar here, what's hurting people, what's not allowing people to live here now, to stay here now, is affordability. As much as you continue building, you still don't have that gap and that understanding of how you keep your people here. So I think we missed out on a really good guy. I know there was other worthy candidates. All four were worthy. I believe all 11 members of the city council board believes that anyone we get will do a good job. But I just thought he would do a more outstanding job coming in, talked about his team building. And lastly, I asked him, I said, you know, tell us about a conflict and give us some examples. Anyone sitting in the audience know that every municipality and job have conflict. And he gave a great answer. You know, he talked about the empathy and working and trying to understand who that person was when that happened and, you know, try to learn from it and make it better without getting to what a lot of people would have just done by, oh, I saw it on Facebook and he's guilty. I saw it on the news and he's guilty without even getting to know the problems. So I'm here, and I believe, again, that we will, you know, eventually have a great city manager, but that was my choice, Mr. Manager.
Councilor De Jesus.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I will also be voting Maltese for three very important reasons. Reasons that are important to me, but that I know are also important to my community. And that is Mr. Maltese's lived experiences, his connection to Chelsea, and his emphasis on family. For me, to live in Chelsea is a whole nother world. You cannot say you're going to get to know the community, to be able to come up front and say, I want to be your next city manager. And I am currently living in your city and have been living in your city. That means a lot to me. So he got many respects from me on that. And also to be so open about family, and our community is huge on family. Not one person I know in my community, maybe, I can't say not one, but maybe a few, but most of my constituents have children in Chelsea Public Schools, have a family that they're raising in Chelsea, talk to me about the importance of understanding that, you know, the lifestyle of having to juggle work and kids and rent or mortgages, that's huge. And so I feel like Mr. Maltese will be able to bring that to the table as he's making decisions with this body. And the lived experiences, I don't need someone Latino to be a city councillor in Chelsea. Just because you're Latino doesn't mean that you're going to be a great city councillor. But to say that you have lived experiences that relate to those in Chelsea, that's huge to me. But you could be Asian, for all I know, right? Just to say that you have those lived experiences of having come to this country and having had parents who have worked to put a roof over your head and to make sure that you are able to move up in this country, that is huge. And that's huge for the people who live in Chelsea. And so that is why I will be voting for him tonight.
Councilor Tenere.
So I will also be voting Maltese. Maltese. I have to echo what both my colleagues have mentioned, but I also have to say that I worked directly with Mr. Maltese during the pandemic. And I do not remember not seeing him in the streets. I do not remember him not picking up, you know, a box of food and taking it to somebody. I asked him for a trash bag, and this man was present. He made sure that our streets were clean, that our streets were lit up. And that, to me, was everything. But also to see that our youth can see themselves in his position and dream. And that, to me, is beautiful. So, thank you.
Alwenda.
So I will be remiss if I don't mention that for me, it was neck and neck with both internal candidates. And I share the sentiments of Damali in the sense as to like, it was hard. And I was saying until Saturday, for me, it was a closing statement, to be honest. And, you know, for me, I was like, we're going to be making history regardless, you know, a woman of color being a city manager, or the first Latino being a city manager. And that means a lot to me, being a woman of color and being a Latina. But I too will be voting for Maltese. His story resonates with the majority of our community, and representation matters. And honestly, his closing statement in terms of el porqué and the why, me dio escalofrío. I got goosebumps. I had to hold myself back from getting emotional because his story resonates with many of our community members in Chelsea. And many of our youth can relate to him. And I too like Tenere Garcia. He was, you know, super, super essential when it came to COVID. And he was in the front lines with us. And if you, he's literally a phone call away. I know what it was to, you know, have a question or there was someone that needed support, and I could, I knew that I could call him. And if he didn't answer right away, most of the time he did. But if he didn't, he would call back immediately. And that's someone that shows commitment to the city and dedication. And that I know that in his position, I can hold him accountable. And having that said, also in terms of his family values that, you know, lie so much with how I was raised, and his love for Chelsea, he lives and breathes it the way many of us do here. So having that said, joya o tal por ti. Yeah, I can't wait to work side by side with you. Hopefully.
If there's nobody else, I want Todd Taylor.
So I just, like my colleague, wanted to thank all the people that went into this process and who gave of their time. And it's really, it's really important. And I think that we had a very good selection committee, and I thank them for their service. I want to thank all the candidates, too, that came and, you know, ran the gauntlet here. You know, it's not the easiest thing. And I also wanted to say that my vote tonight is solely based on who's going to do the best job. End of story. Who is most capable? Who told me that the long-term financial stability of this city was the number one priority? And that they promised to be proactive, which is something that I preach from up here. So thank you very much. And thank you to my colleagues for speaking with me on and off individually about everything. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilor Julia Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for being here and being so patient. Thank you for the people who are present here today or at home, who were in one way or another a part of this long process. Tonight, I will be voting for the individual who, when asked, what is Chelsea's biggest strength? This candidate said Chelsea's biggest strength is its people. This candidate said Chelsea's biggest strength is its people. Tonight, I will be voting for the candidate who focuses on finding common ground and not in our differences. Tonight, I will be voting for the candidate who said he leads by two words, responsiveness and accessibility. And tonight, I will be voting for the candidate who has the experience, the compassion, the empathy to lead. So my vote will be for Fidel Maltese. Enhorabuena para nuestra comunidad que ha tenido que esperar tanto tiempo por representación auténtica con experiencia, y así que, por ti, por todos. For him and for everyone. We're voting for the most qualified candidate. My vote will be for Fidel Maltese.
If I may speak, I would submit Cheryl Watson Fisher's name. Just a couple of things. She's been the city solicitor since 2003. She's 25 years of municipal service, 20 years of municipal management for the city of Chelsea. She was part of the Chelsea Executive Office for 20 years. She's also the attorney for the school, school department. She created the Florida Youth System for Chelsea, which improved our streets. She became a civil rights investigator for the schools and trained the schools. She reinstated Chelsea Day. She started the Chelsea Market, helping Chelsea entrepreneurs through the economic development for youth and city jobs around marijuana establishment. She's, 200 Chelsea residents have been hired. She's a member of the retirement board. She was instrumental in closing the last strip club here. She secured online application process for licensing and special events. She volunteered to be the licensing director. She has stepped up to hiring her two city managers, has part of an executive team in addition to routine duties of a city solicitor, which includes negotiation of land use agreements for urban renewal, developing the legal aspect of the city's overall strategy, negotiating and enforcing all collective bargaining agreements in Chelsea. And she reviews and signs every contract for services and goods for the city and schools, and enforcing city ordinances. And during the pandemic, she created Chelsea Legal Services to help with residents during the virus emergency with tenant landlord issues since the law department had a conflict representing tenants. So my candidate comes with a lot of wealth, and she's already in the building, and I think that was a plus. She was also a finalist for the City of Cambridge job, and that's why I'm supporting Cheryl
I'll ask the clerk to take the roll.
When your name is called, please state the full name of the candidate you are supporting for city manager. Seven affirmative votes are required for the selection of the city manager. Counselor Brown. Counselor Judith Garcia.
Fidel Maltese.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Fidel Maltese.
Counselor Lopez.
Fidel Maltese.
Counselor Robinson.
Cheryl Watson Fisher.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Vito.
Fidel Maltese.
Counselor De Jesus.
Fidel Maltese.
Counselor Haddlerberg.
Fidel Maltese.
Counselor Vega.
Fidel Maltese.
And Counselor Taylor.
Fidel Maltese.
10 votes in favor of Fidel Maltese. Fidel Maltese has been selected city manager.
I would like to offer a motion that we make this unanimous, if there are no objections. So at this time, we'll make it unanimous for Fidel Maltese.
Plenty of it, a lot.
There's no objection, we can take a two-minute break. Huh? There's no objection, we can take a two-minute break. We're back in session, so take your seat or see ya. All right, we're back in session, ladies and gentlemen.
I'll have the clerk read the next order.
We move on to new business. We have an order introduced by Council President Robinson, order that pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 268A, Section 20B. The Chelsea City Council hereby approves a conflict of interest exemption for Mr. Alejandro Arroyo to the part-time position of girls' head softball coach for middle schools effective immediately.
Calvin Brown moves roll call on the adoption. Seeing no objections. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
It's too late, we're voting.
Yes.
Pull your mic down, Counselor.
Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Haddlerberg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
And Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
11 in favor, none opposed. The order is adopted.
Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson, order that pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 268A, Section 20B. The Chelsea City Council hereby approves a conflict of interest exemption for Ms. Amy Vellas to the part-time temporary position of summer paraprofessional effective immediately.
Counselor Recupero moves roll call on the adoption. Seeing no objections.
Can I speak on it?
You can speak on it.
Nothing with this person, but from what I understand, if you read the page before it.
Can you use the mic, Counselor?
Huh?
Use the mic.
Okay. If you look at the page which they gave us, you'll see in there that this person, when it got hired, but she was already working for the city. She should have told them that whoever is in charge, maybe that's the procedure they use. They should change the whole procedure. Maybe this person didn't know, because there's no need for them to come to us after this person already was working, and then they tell you, if you read in there, it'll tell you, it'll say, we weren't aware that this particular person was working for the city. How can you not be aware that that person works for the city when he applies and she's already working for the city? So what are you hiring? How do you, how is your process? How does it work? So if you're hiring a person outside and he comes in, they're going to tell you everything. This person puts on the paper, if you read it, it'll tell you, it'll say, well, we weren't, we were not aware. I'm repeating myself again, that. How can that be? They shouldn't be that way, so I'm not blaming this person or anything else. What I'm trying to say is do the procedure the way it's supposed to be done. If you're going to hire somebody, make sure you know who they are before you hire them. Don't hire them and then come to us and say, oh, well, we, we didn't know she was working for the city. It's got nothing to do with this person. It probably has to do for the hiring process, who does it? So do the right thing and do the right way. I'm not objecting to anything. I'm going to vote yes for this person. The whole problem I have is that they should make sure to do their job.
Counselor Vito.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. This isn't controversial for me at all, but I know that this is all because of the city manager process, that Ned Keef is, you know, he's overwhelmed usually, because I've, we've approved this previously, and we usually do it in the beginning of the summer, but I think because everything has just kind of been delayed, I do think that there is a precedent that's kind of been set where
All right, we're back in session, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, I'll have the clerk read the next order.
We move on to new business. We have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B. The Chelsea City Council hereby approves a conflict of interest exemption for Mr. Alejandro Arroyo to the part-time position of girls' head softball coach for middle schools effective immediately.
Calvin Brown moves roll call on the adoption. Seeing no objections, the clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Brown. Counselor Judith Garcia. Counselor Tenere Garcia. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
It's too late, we're voting.
Yes.
Pull your mic down, counselor.
Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
And Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed. The order is adopted.
Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B. The Chelsea City Council hereby approves a conflict of interest exemption for Ms. Amy Velas to the part-time temporary position of summer paraprofessional effective immediately.
Counselor Recupero moves roll call on the adoption. Seeing no objections. You can speak on it.
Nothing with this person, but from what I understand, if you read the page before it...
Can you use the mic, counselor?
Huh?
Use the mic.
Okay, if you look at the page which they gave us, you'll see in there that this person, when it got hired, but she was already working for the city. She should've told them that whoever is in charge, maybe that's the procedure they use. They should change the whole procedure. Maybe this person didn't know. Because there's no need for them to come to us after this person already was working and then they tell you, if you read in there, it'll tell you, it'll say, "We weren't aware that this particular person was working for the city." How could you not be aware that that person works for the city when he applies and she's already working for the city? So, what are you hiring? How do you, how is your process? How does it work? So, you're hiring a person outside and he comes in, they're gonna tell you everything. This person puts on the paper, if you read it, it'll tell you, it'll say, "Well, we weren't, we were not aware," I'm repeating myself again, that... How can that be? They shouldn't be that way, so I'm not blaming this person or anything else. What I'm trying to say is, do the procedure the way it's supposed to be done. If you're gonna hire somebody, make sure you know who they are before you hire them. Don't hire them and then come to us and say, "Oh, well, we, we didn't know she was working for the city." It's got nothing to do with this person. It probably has to do for the hiring process, who does it? So, do the right thing and do the right way. I'm not objecting to anything. I'm gonna vote yes for this person. The whole problem I have is that they should make sure to do their job.
Counselor Vito.
This isn't controversial for me at all, but I know that this is all because of the city manager process, that Ned Keef is, you know, he's overwhelmed usually, 'cause I've, we've approved this previously. And we usually do it in the beginning of the summer, but I think because everything has just kind of been delayed. I do think that there is a precedent that's kind of been set where it's like, and I often follow this, where it's like you do it and then you ask for permission later. But I think it really undermines the power of the council, and so I would hope that moving forward, that we could, with the next city manager, that we ensure that we're doing things, following the process in a timely manner, so that we don't have these discussions. Because this really isn't a controversial thing, but there are obviously, there's data coming up here that there's things that we can do better.
Clarification, they are, they're already city employees, but they need, they need the exemption to be able to be the girls' softball coach and the other position that was...
Correct, Mr. President, but the second person already fulfilled their role and they're coming to us for the exemption when it should've been done in the beginning of the summer.
We had, this was, this was for next year. Yeah, next order.
Roll call. Counselor Brown. Counselor Judith Garcia. Counselor Tenere Garcia. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor. Eleven in favor, none opposed. The order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson regarding a proposed amendment to Chapter 34, Article 10, Section 34-241, definitions of commercial recreation indoor of the City of Chelsea zoning ordinance.
Counselor Haddelberg.
We should move this proposed change to a hearing before the Planning Board and schedule a council public hearing for some time in December.
Thank you, Counsel.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselors Lopez and Recupero. Order requesting the city manager and DPW commissioner send the electrical contractor to repair the ornamental lights on City Hall Avenue and in front of the E-911 building on Washington Avenue.
Chair recognizes Counsel Eno.
I've turned the suspension.
Seeing no objections. You have the floor if you want to speak on the matter.
Yeah, when the previous city manager was here, I was letting them know that, uh, City Hall Avenue, almost every night, they had no lights, the ornamental lights, and then in front of 911. And I was complaining that there was no lights, and they were telling me, "Oh, there's a switch that need to get fixed, switch that need to get fixed," and I don't know if they fix it or not. Works one day, one night, two nights, and then next week it's, it's not working. So, what I wanna see is that they can fix that switch that needs to get fixed, so we can have lights. That's one of the things that I always complain about, lights in the city. As Counsel Recupero also said, we need lights. Thank you.
Counsel Recupero.
Like I said earlier in the other section, they are doing, they are doing it, so thank you. And keep trying even harder, so we won't come to you anymore.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson regarding a proposed amendment to Chapter 34, Article 12, Section 34-152, C2, marijuana retailers of the City of Chelsea zoning ordinance.
Counsel Haddelberg moves it to the Planning Board and schedule a public hearing.
I would motion to refer this to the Planning Board. I do want to pause for a moment and clarify. What we have before us has two pieces to the order. The first piece would simply strike the portion that says marijuana retailers are prohibited. I do not intend to do that at this time. I intend to move the whole matter to the Planning Board. And so, essentially, I'm waiting for the recommendation from the zoning board before voting on the actual matter that's stated in the order.
Right, it'll, we'll get, we'll get a, a ruling from the Planning Board.
Send the whole matter for recommendation.
For recommendation. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel Recupero requesting the city manager instruct the Department of Housing and Community Development to remove the bicycle lane on Third Street from Broadway to Chestnut Street due to heavy traffic congestion in the area.
Chair recognizes Counsel Recupero. Use your mic, please.
I'd like to adopt under suspension and speak on it.
Yes.
That section, like we said before, that section is very important to our city. It leads cars out. It used to be a better place. It wasn't as congested. So, I believe that the bicycle lane contributes in that particular section to more congestion and more time for our residents, including me, which I live around that area, which takes me a half an hour sometime, just to go from my street to the end of that street. So, the study would, I believe that not, it's not such a big section to eliminate, to put the cars going back. And it's a good thing for the city to do. And I, my own personal opinion from being around this area is that that would alleviate the problem and it would help. It won't stop the congestion of cars, but it will stop some congestion. It will make it a little quicker for the people to go there.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselors Lopez, Recupero, and Vito. Order that the city manager, city clerk, Traffic and Parking Commission, and city solicitor clarify the timeframe to have matters placed and listed on the agenda for Traffic and Parking Commission meetings.
Counsel Lopez.
Under suspension, I would like to speak on it, please.
Seeing no objections, so move. You have the floor, Counsel.
Yes, the reason I put this in is because I have been put twice. Some orders about traffic and parking, it was approved by Traffic and Parking, and it took months to put it on the agenda. So, what I'm trying to do here is that, maybe they can tell me, how long does it take to go on the parking and traffic agenda? Because I had an order on September 11th, it was supposed to be tomorrow on the agenda. They didn't put it. Someone is not doing their job there. And it's not, I think, not only for traffic and parking, it can be for zoning, it can be license. But my two complaints are that they're supposed to be on the next agenda and they don't put it. So, someone is not doing their job. Thank you.
Counsel Recupero.
The reason why they don't put it in the agenda, it's simple. The people should know. A council can go to the Parking and Traffic Commission and say to them, "We want you to hear this." If the Parking and Traffic Commission does not agree with what you say, it'll never go to the agenda. So, the say is not to the council. So, when people say the council is ain't trying, we are trying very hard. The people should know the actual facts. The actual fact is that we can send something to the Parking and Traffic Commission, and the Parking and Traffic Commission doesn't have to do it. They can just throw it away. But it shouldn't be that way. It should be that we send something to them, they should look at it and they're back to us. They say the council is the final say in the parking and traffic. We're the final say on what they say. But if they don't like what we say, they let it go out the door. So, this is the way it works. You can ask the city solicitor, you can ask the parking and traffic, and there's something else, too. When you have a parking and traffic commission where it says it's for the citizens, there's only one citizen that actually lives in our city that's on that parking and traffic commission. There's five members. Out of five members, four of them are city officials. So, whatever we put anything in that they don't agree with, it's never gonna get done, because you're never gonna do it. And don't let them tell you that, "Oh, we're the final say." We're the final say, like I said, on what they say. But believe me when I tell you, you can never achieve anything when you have four officials that are working for the city and not for the people. You need to have a different setup where you have more residents on that board, where it would be unequal, instead of being four to one, because you're never gonna win. Regardless of what you do, you're never gonna win. Thank you.
Counsel DeMoli.
President, I just want to say that we do have a pending traffic parking commission, but I have been reluctant to schedule it due to the city manager process. But I'm hoping to get together with you, Mr. President, and come up with a date, because there's obviously a bunch of concerns that we have for the traffic parking commission. With respect to this order, I do think that we need some clarity as, as far as what's the deadline? Does it have to be submitted two weeks before a meeting, a schedule? I, I, we just need to know, to figure out what the process is, because there seems to be some miscommunication somewhere and things aren't getting where they need to go. So, hopefully, we can get a response from the city manager on that, or the acting city manager. And then, obviously, there will be a pending, much broader conversation with the traffic parking commission in the weeks to come.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel Recupero regarding a proposed amendment to Chapter 34, Article 11, Table of Dimensional Regulations, and Article 13, Table of Principal Use Regulations of the City of Chelsea zoning ordinances.
Move to, move to planning, publishing.
Do you object to doing this by suspension? It would ask for a roll call vote on it?
Can I speak on it?
Yeah, you have the floor.
All right, my fellow counselor wants to have a roll call vote. Well, fine. What this does is, what I'm trying to achieve is equality for all, all of us. Not only for this section and every section. And then, you're always talking about, "We want to have affordable housing." There's no more space in our city for affordable housing. The next section you have for affordable housing is on the other end, where it's really, you've got big lots. It's not a big change. What you're changing is from 7,500 square feet, you're going to 5,000, like the rest. And from 3,500, you're going to 3,000. And then, if you want to build, you need a special permit. So, you're not making a drastic change to this. What you're doing is you're allowing some people that would wish to build affordable housing for this city, which the city needs, and there's not enough affordable housing lots to do it. This is, R1 is the next place. I spoke to Mr. Dupreez, and he's not against it. He understands, you know, that we need this kind of relief to build. And it's always, they always say, "Well, we can't build on the R1." Why can't you build an R1? You can build an R2, you can build in all of them. The only thing that I'm trying to achieve here is a little parity, and not only in that, is to make sure that there's plenty places where affordable housing could be built. If you vote not to have that, there's no more places to build affordable housing. Where are you gonna build it? The city's only 1.8 square miles. There's no space. You need to have places, and if you want to grow, that's what you have to do. You have to change your ordinance sometimes. And my district, most of the districts are already all that way. The only one that's that way is the R1 district. And I believe myself and a lot of people in our, in our city believe, I ask them all the time, that it should be equal. It shouldn't be where you can build in one and not the other. But, and the other part is that, for years, it's always been the belief, when I asked for the first time to change it, they said to me, "Well, we can't do that, because through the years, it's always been that way." Wasn't a time to change? If you want to change and grow, and you keep saying you want affordable housing, well, where you gonna put the affordable housing? There's no space. The next space is the R1 district. So, let the R1 district come to compliance with the rest of the districts. They're no different than anywhere else. So, let them come and be equal. If you want, build affordable, that's where you go. If you don't want affordable housing, vote no.
Counsel, Counsel Haddelberg.
All right, I, I do want to vote on this. I personally will be voting no on this. And I actually would ask for the support of my colleagues in voting no on this. I think it's a stealthy, really big deal to allow ourselves as a body to change zoning, not for the sake of sounding negative, but randomly. You know, if I have an idea this morning and I want to go touch our zoning code to change it for my idea of the moment, the zoning code is a very big citywide thing. I believe there's a long, lengthy sweeping process that has to happen before we change fundamental things in our zoning ordinance by, not to make it sound smaller, but by whim. R1 is a pretty fundamental district. What we're actually saying in here is, let's let small lots in R1 be three families. That's possible to entertain. It's possible that that's a good idea. I don't believe that it is personally, but I strongly object to making a change that fundamental in this way. And really would make my basic argument, I would like to vote no on this, simply so that we can have some agreement amongst ourselves to do sweeping community processes in a slow deliberative way and do it in what I would call the right way, rather than the wrong way. So, I will be voting no on the zoning amendment.
I will give my time to Counsel Recupero.
He's giving me his time, so I'll talk after him.
Okay, so... So, I agree with Counselor Haddelberg. This is, this is, this is no way to do something like this. It's, it's, it's really kind of capricious and, and, you know. I, I, I understand what the counselor is saying, but I think that there's, you know, I, I know that people from my district would, would object pretty vehemently to something like this. And, and besides, this is something that would need to come before, before we do anything like this, to, at least to a subcommittee, so that people can talk about it and not just have one counselor, you know, saying, "Oh, we ought to do this. Let's do it." Send it off to, we can't do things that way. We need to, we, we need to, to have, like Counsel Haddelberg said, a long deliberative process that's measured and, and well-vetted. So, you know, I have no objection about it going to a subcommittee. If you want to vote it down, that's, that, that's up to, that's up to everybody. I would not be supporting this, but, but I certainly object.
I yielded his time to me. What he's saying, what counselors are saying, this is gonna be a long, and you are gonna talk about it, because it's, we don't make no decision right now. The only decision we're making is to send it to the Planning and Development. They will come back to us, and then there will be a public hearing. It's not random, like you say. We do that with every ordinance that we make, and we do that with everything we try to do. It's not just saying, "I'm gonna do it right now." We're not doing anything. I already have spoken to Planning, I've spoken to Mr. Dupreez, and I already, you can find out yourself, like counselor says, "Oh, my constituents are gonna be upset." Well, about all the constituents in all the other districts that are getting built on? Why are they upset? Okay, so you're saying, "Well, it's okay to build all over the place, but you can't build where I am." Why? Why can't we build where you are and why build? I can make you a prime example, where I, on my district, they built a house, a three-family house, on, on 3,000 square feet, three-family. On this amendment, what this is saying here, it doesn't say to build three-family. It says with a special permit. The only thing you're doing, and then to build an additional apartment, you only took away 500. 500, from 3,500 to 3,000. Why can't we send it to Planning and Development and let them say, "Well, I don't think it's a good idea?" So, we denying the opportunity to send it to them, because you live, or whatever, you represent the district that doesn't favor it. So, when it comes to my district, and I should say, "Well, I don't favor it either." What, does it matter? They did it anyways, so how are you gonna say this to me? You can't say to me, "Well, we can't do it because one counselor said it." I'm not saying anything. I'm saying to send it to Planning and Development. Let them decide. Let them send it back to us. What's wrong with sending it to them? Is there something bad to send it to them? No, send it to them and let them decide. If you want to vote no, fine. I'm gonna be voting yes. I'm in favor of sending it to them, because it's a lengthy process. It's like everything else.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel DeJesus.
I will also be voting no. I agree, however, with many of my colleagues. I agree that this is not a decision that you kind of just pop up on the floor and not have, you know, department heads such as Alex Train and, and folks like John Dupreez. I want to see some, some documents and database and, and information on these districts. And, and I would also like to hear from the Affordable Housing Trust, right? And what's going on in that department and those folks who have been dedicating time for many years to, to creating affordable housing in our community, and how we can complement some of that on the floor here. But also, I would agree with my fellow counselor that if there is one specific area in Chelsea that is not carrying the burden of the rest of the districts, why? What makes it, you know, what are the challenges that prohibit that area to having more affordable housing? And, and then for us to be able to deliberate after that as to what is actually, you know, correct for us to move forward, right? Because we don't want to make, we don't want to make our community, community where there are specific... are specific districts or areas that are more segregated and don't have affordable housing. And so I, that's one of the reasons why I, you know, I'm listening to all the, the comments today, but I am looking forward, I will be voting no, and I am looking forward to having a longer conversation about affordable housing, which I think some of my colleagues are already having that in mind, especially now that we have our city manager decision done. So, thank you.
Council Vito.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is already two other orders, ordinances, proposal, amendments proposed earlier that went to zoning and planning. And I did appreciate what Counsel Hattler asked, that we slowed down a little bit, that we kind of wanted to make sure that we heard back from the planning board, because I think that sometimes we just kind of rush things through. I would love to get home to my family, too, but I want to make sure that we're doing the work of the people. And then, the private counselor said, you know, the people in my area would not want this. Well, that's kind of the point. It's, as Counsel DeJesus said, it's that, you know, the burden of affordable housing is falling in, in the more, in, in other areas, and private is not necessarily carrying their full weight. But I also understand respecting the integrity of the fabric of the community, and it's a lot of single-family homes, and I know that there's challenges, which is why we shouldn't be rushing through all of this. I personally don't feel comfortable approving, approving any zoning unless we have extensive dialogue on it. I will be supporting Counsel Recupero in sending this to Planning and Zoning, because I don't see the harm in getting a professional opinion to initiate the conversation. I'm not really crazy about the way that we're doing this. I really don't think it's the way we should be doing it, so I can understand why folks would vote against it. But ultimately, I think that what, what, the big umbrella here is affordable housing and housing, period. It's a crisis. It's a national crisis. And we're not going to, we're not going to fix it in one meeting or by this little dinky zoning amendment. But it's definitely a much broader conversation that we need to have. But I will be supportive of Recupero, because we had two other ordinances come before us that were standing there to get a professional opinion, and I don't see the harm in having conversations. Thank you.
What was, what was the motion?
Motion was to send this to Planning and Development or to the planning board?
Senator, and schedule a public hearing. Just an FYI, we will be getting a packet for some zoning changes that relates to around the transportation area. And that, they're looking for the City of Chelsea along with eleven other areas to build like about thirty-six hundred houses. And if we don't comply, we will not be eligible for about twelve grants that the state does. And one of those grants would probably be Mass Works, which is a big chunk of money we get here in the city. So with all these zoning changes that we keep proposing.
So that's a committee meeting?
Well, it hasn't been presented to us. They're working, they're working on it now, because the, the state had worked out all the penalties and everything that will happen if we don't meet our obligation. Council Taylor.
Mr. President, I just, can we, can we, can we, I understand about, you know, people's concerns about things. Can we, can we just wait and, and have a subcommittee on this until, you know, I, you know, maybe he talked to Mr. Dupree.
Right.
But he certainly didn't have a, a conversation with me about it. So, you know, I, I, I'm going to object, I'm going to object to this and, and, and send it to a subcommittee. I think that, that there's, that these are serious things that, you know, I don't see the harm in sending it. Well, yes, I do. I think that, I think that counselors deserve the respect, and we need to start vetting what we do before we just, you know, do it out of hand. So, so I, I would, I, I'm going to object to this and send it to a subcommittee.
That's it.
On conference.
Yeah, you can't object, because it's already been read. It can, well, it can go to the planning board, and after they have, after it comes back to us, you can request a conference. Planning board, the planning board is only going to make a recommendation.
I understand, but it's furthering along in the process before counselors have ever even had a chance to talk about it. So, I'm sorry, I object.
You want to make a vote to send it to the subcommittee?
Yes.
Counsel, Counsel Taylor wants to make a motion. Excuse me, Counsel. Counsel Taylor wants to make a motion and send it back to, send it to conference. I'm sorry. Anyone want to speak on it?
What do we do? We send it to the subcommittee in conference?
Yes.
Why?
The motion, the motion on the. The motion on the floor.
He made a mo.
I'm making a motion to take a vote.
We are taking a vote.
Well, then I'm making an amendment, that it goes to the planning board. So whether we vote on that?
The initial, the initial motion on the floor was your motion.
Relax. Why don't you listen?
The initial motion on the floor was to move your order to the planning board in a public hearing. Counsel Hattler objected to unanimous consent and moved it by roll call vote. Counsel Taylor has made a motion to move it to subcommittee instead. Once his motion has been decided one way or the other, if it's rejected, then your initial motion goes forward. But if his motion is approved, it will go to a subcommittee instead. So the motion before the council now is to move the order introduced by Counsel Recupero to a subcommittee on conference. A yes vote will to move it to conference, a no vote will not.
What are we voting on now?
Explain. We're voting to send it to conference.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Teneri Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero. Counsel Vito.
Yes.
Counsel DeJesus.
Yes.
Counsel Hattler.
Yes.
Counsel Vega.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Ten in favor, one opposed. The motion introduced by Counsel Taylor to move to a subcommittee on conference is adopted.
Let's go in a conference. Let's go in a conference. We're on the last order.
Finally, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that the Chelsea City Council enter into an employment agreement with Edward Keefe as city manager of the City of Chelsea.
Motion to vote by roll call vote?
Can I just say something briefly?
Yes.
Were you going to speak on it? Yeah, never mind. Yeah.
So what we're, what we're essentially doing here is voting on the employment agreement that would keep Ned Keefe around through December while we are negotiating a contract for the city manager. This is essentially what we already agreed to. It took some time to get the format of the agreement, essentially attorneys and decisions and all this stuff. So what we're really doing now is voting on the particulars of what we sort of verbally agreed to with him.
Right. Yeah, for the record, it was an increase to Ned, ten thousand was the number. That brought him up to one seventy-four, nine hundred. Okay. That's correct, but, but Ned and I had to negotiate all the terms. His attorney had to review it. Give it back to us. Our attorney had to review it, make sure it was okay for him to sign and I to sign. Yes. All right, we'll probably be doing another one pretty soon. Roll call.
Counsel, Counsel Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Teneri Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero.
Yes.
Counsel Vito.
Yes.
Counsel DeJesus.
Yes.
Counsel Hattler.
Yes.
Counsel Vega.
Yes.
And Counsel Taylor. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Order is adopted. Next, we have public announcements.
Any public announcements? Counsel Vito.
I know that we said this earlier. It's been a long meeting, but I just, I'm really, I'm really proud of the process that we had over the weekend and the city manager interview process. And I just wanted to, like, just make sure to thank the search committee and everyone involved that made it possible, the residents that came and spoke and sat here for eight hours, listening to interview after interview. And I, I, I just, I want to make sure that, that I'm just acknowledging our search committee, because sometimes when we're, you know, when, when, me, speak for me, sometimes when I'm criticizing, I don't, I fail to recognize the people that actually put in the work. And, and I just want to make sure that I'm thanking all the members of the search committee for, for their due diligence in providing the candidates that we did. And, yeah, thank you.
Counsel Recupero.
Counsel Robinson, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I only have one public announcement. The public announcement is, on Highland Street, the fence is still there, but you can park. So don't think because the fence is there, you can't park. You could park.
Any other? Counsel Taylor.
So I just wanted to take this opportunity. Today is my father's ninety-fifth birthday. And I actually had a trip scheduled to Phoenix to celebrate with him today, but the city manager's search got in the way. I also had my, my dear Aunt Marge pass away from breast cancer. This is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I was, it was the same weekend, and so I, I, I feel bad, but I, I'm sending love to my family tonight. So I, I appreciate the indulgence, and I did my duty for Chelsea.
You come from good, strong genes.
Any other announcements? I brought him over to silence for Todd's family and also for.
Catherine Martin.
Catherine Martin, and also Tim Wakefield, who used to be for the Red Sox, and actually his wife is also.
Pancreatic cancer.
From cancer. In a plane crash? Russ Francis. No further business before this council. Where are you, John?
Ninety-five years old.